All right. I guess we take a message of any motion to open the work session?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Okay, this is a work session of the Board of Trustees of a village of Mamaronek. The exits are on both sides there. We, this is a a hearing for a, an opportunity for one of the respondents to our RFP that the that the village requested in determining that we would wanted all affordable housing across the street here. And this is one of the proposals that has been presented. This is not a public hearing. This is a, an opportunity for the respondent to address the board. And so I would caution the public that, that they can, they will have opportunity to us to, to address the, the issue at two public hearings on these matters after we're finished with all the, all the input. And I think I could probably pretty much guarantee that those public hearings will take place next month in December. So that, that will happen.
We haven't talked about that.
Well, um, we haven't talked about it, but I, I, I think there's probably
It could be as a possibility.
Possibility. You're not sure if, if
If, I'm sorry, Jerry, Lou.
Yes.
If we wanted to, I think what Lou was saying, if we wanted to, and I think it would be fair in consideration of listening to the public a little bit more, they can have a chance for actual public hearing on the proposals, because there's no decision being made tonight.
No decision being made tonight. And Jesse Rawlings, welcome. I was just saying that I, I, I think there's probably a consensus of the board that we would have public hearings on this next month in December. Is that a fair?
But that's a public hearing on this and this. I mean, then what are we considering this meeting?
Well, this is, this is a response as a public hearing for the public to respond.
And that, that's, isn't that essentially the same thing as a public hearing? Because that's, that's the moment we have the public would come and they give their impact and feedback to us.
Yes.
These are just work sessions, Manny.
These are, this is just a work session. And I, and I think, I think we can assure the public that they will have an opportunity to address this in, in December. Okay, okay, all right, all right. So we have a consensus. I'll guarantee that'll happen. All right, so and again to, for the rest of our, for the fellow board members, that this is a proposal that is not set in stone. It is what the, the respondent to the, the applicant is making. We will hear that and we will offer our questions and, and subsequent suggestions for revision. We are here to listen and ask questions. And we are also in addition to evaluating the project itself, we're evaluating the vision, talent, ability and past performance of the, of the entity that is seeking to fulfill this work that we've requested. That is it. With, with that, I would turn it over to our, our friends here for the, for the presentation and please, please stick your name and, and firewood.
Am I being heard okay?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you to all the trustees and village staff for having us. My name is Rich Nettengel. I'm the president of West Hab and the Washingtonville Housing Alliance. I'm going to connect between the two in just a moment. I'm joined by Andrew Darmansky, who's West Hab's Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development and our architect from Marvel, Guido Hartray. I'm your architect for just a moment as well. So again, thank you so much for having us. There, yeah, our presentation's up, so the public can see that as well. And we'll just mention when to advance the slides. I just want to say we are truly excited about presenting Hundred Carrots. Washingtonville has the roots in this community and it just feels like such an exciting time to invest in the Marinerne and create something everyone can be really proud of. And we worked really hard to put something forth here that, that we're really excited about. If you want to just go to the next slide quickly. I think a lot of people know that the Washingtonville Housing Alliance is the village of Mamaronek's local not-for-profit housing organization. We're the only housing-focused not-for-profit based here in the village solely focused on the village. Actually, Teresa is here with us tonight. She's our program coordinator for Washingtonville. And we go far beyond housing. We have all kinds of onsite programs. Our main office is right here on Library Lane, just down the street. A number of years ago now, in 2014, the Washingtonville Housing Alliance formed a strategic partnership with West Hab. West Hab is the largest not-for-profit affordable housing developer in Westchester. And it's really an ideal partnership in a lot of ways. Washingtonville has maintained its local presence. It has a completely local board. It has a completely local mission. It is a separate 501(c)(3), you know, with autonomy and independence. But it's backed by West Hab and brings, you know, with that our capacity. And over the, over the time since our, our partnership has begun, we've been able to really improve the portfolio, expand the programming that we're offering while keeping that local focus with Washingtonville. So the submission is a co-submission of West Hab and Washingtonville, which in many ways are one thing. The next slide, I won't go through all this now, but this is our development team for our proposal. We really brought together an incredibly talented team of, of professionals that work on these kind of projects. As I said, you'll hear from Marvel in just a moment and all the architecture and design that went into this, this, this proposal. CRC, obviously, another extremely well-known not-for-profit here in the village will be the cooperator of the community hub space that we're proposing in our Hundred Terrace Development. So we're really excited and we work with them. Teresa and our team at Washingtonville work with CRC every day. I think one thing that we have in common is that we have local residents pouring into our offices every day, asking about housing, getting priced out, experiencing the cost of living in our community. And we are constantly triaging housing needs together. All of our consultants here, our sustainability consultant, we're bringing, you know, state-of-the-art green design that we'll get into. And you see all of our engineers and, you know, everyone else that we bring to the table. These are all firms and entities that have produced first-rate, beautiful market and affordable housing. And what I always like to tell people is that we build market-rate housing. The only thing not marketed is the rents. And what we want to put forth is something that everyone would be proud to live in with state-of-the-art finishes, with really beautiful amenities. And that's exactly what we're proposing here. If you go to the next slide. We really saw this RFP in so many ways as really needing a moment, right? And I think no denying, and I won't get into it here, we're really going to talk about our proposal. But you can see right in the village's own comp plan what the incredible need for housing is. In the comp plan, it actually quoted that the percentage of rent burdening households in the community has gone all the way up to 50% as of 2017. So I think sometimes people think about affordable housing and we're going to get into the income percentages that we propose to serve here and who those, who those prospective tenants are. But I think so often people think of this as a poverty issue or an issue of the few. Half of our friends and neighbors need housing like this. And probably all of us feel to some degree the prefer of housing costs. And, and you know, I looked on Zillow today and a two-bedroom on, on Waverly was being rented for $6,295 a month. For that to be 30% of your income, you'd have to make $251,800 a year. So that would be the cost to have, you know, moderate-sized two-bedrooms in our village. That's just not a sustainable path forward for our workforce and for our community. As far as meeting this moment goes, this is also an opportunity to build truly resilient housing. We know a lot of our more affordable housing stock is in the Washingtonville community, is in the flood zone. This is an opportunity to do something different than that. And then really to build sustainable green housing, to build something that can be a model of healthy and, and really eco-friendly housing. And I mentioned before, I'll mention again a little bit later, which really meet needs of our local workforce. And if you go up and down the Marinerne Avenue, if you go on Old Coast Road, you're going to see a lot of health wanted signs. You're going to see a lot of our current workforce that commute far for jobs that don't pay a living wage in our community. And we know there's so much more that we can do to better support our workforce. Next slide, tell you a little bit about West Hab. I just got to turn, so I see what you guys are looking at. This is something that we recently completed in Yonkers called Dayspring Commons. And it's also adjacent to a brand-new community center that we created in that community called Dayspring Community Center. And because we're proposing a community hub here at Hundred Terrace, we thought this was super relevant of how we build housing in conjunction with accessible public community space. So yeah, it's housing for 63 tenants in Dayspring Commons. But we also have a large, full-service, completely free-to-the-community center adjacent to this. And we invented a community hub here at Hundred Terrace that will also be publicly used. We want to really not just create a beautiful development for our tenants. We want to create something beautiful for the entire village. So Dayspring is a great example of incorporating that, that kind of public use. Go to the next one. Certainly, we want to highlight one of our developments here in the village. This is right on Old White Plains Road. This is a 10-unit building. Affordable building. In total, Washingtonville has 40-unit affordable housing. As I mentioned earlier, with the exception of Library Lane, they're pretty much all in the Washingtonville community. Either on Old White Plains or Madison or Waverly, all, all really in that vicinity. But this is building probably a lot of people drive by in town every day, don't know if they know that it's Washingtonville Housing Alliance. Build a building that runs really well, you know, that we, we support our tenants at, so something local. This is something that actually West Hab is busy changing construction on right now called Somerton Hudson. We thought this one was really worth highlighting. It won a Buildings of Excellence Award for Sustainable Design. This is not just the greenest building that we've ever built. It may be the greenest multifamily building in all of Westchester. This building has no gas service, so it's 100% electrified. It has a huge solar array on the roof. But also we've made green the theme of the whole building. We're creating an exhibit in the ground floor space so the community can learn about sustainable design and green construction. The whole building is built around this big interior courtyard. It's really just, it's going to be a great place for 113 people, 113 tenants to live. But it's also another example of delivering something that's a real investment in the community and really sets the standard of what affordable housing can be. So really excited to, you know, share a little bit about what we've done in the past. I'm going to turn it over to Guido from Marvel to talk a little bit about some of their work. So you see the kind of design expertise that they have.
And, and Before you go, do you want us to ask questions at the end or can we ask during?
What's your preference?
I think we should let them present and then ask.
Good evening and I'm pleased to present the design. My name is Guido Hartray. I'm a partner in Marvel. Marvel is a interdisciplinary design practice. We, we design buildings. We're architects. We're landscape architects. We're planners. We're interior designers. And, and our projects include cultural institutions like the St. Anne's Warehouse that you're seeing on the screen. Parks and green spaces and, and also housing. Housing is a big part of our practice. And we particularly enjoy the opportunity to work on housing and affordable housing with mission-driven nonprofits, because we find that those, as developers, they're really kind of investing in the housing for the long term. And so it's been great to be able to put together the design that we're going to present to you tonight with the team that had Washingtonville West Hab. So a little bit of our, of our housing experience, there's a lot of it. I've just selected a couple of projects in Westchester. This is a project named White Plains. It's LEED certified, Energy Star rated. It is, it's affordable housing, but it is built to the same standard that we would do for market-rate units and maybe even a little bit higher. Next slide, another project in, in White Plains. This, this is Column House. So this is a project that's just going into construction now. And you can see how, like, in working in a tourist context, we picked that opportunity to pick up kind of articulation, pick up elements from the village architecture and also relate to the scale of the village. Next slide. And, and so that's the experience that we, that we brought to this site when we began to look at how we could design housing for it. And, you know, it, it is a tremendously exciting site on which to work. There's so many things in the village to draw from and to draw architectural inspiration. And, and that's really what we set about doing as we developed the design. On the next slide, you can see one of the things that really was important to us is, you know, the site is on South Spence Avenue, which is very aptly named. It says, it's going to have fantastic views out over the harbor and over the village. And also it's going to be, you're going to see it. You're going to see it coming up Library Lane. You're going to see it from different points of the village. And so in developing the design, we think about those things. Like what are the, what are the view corridors from which you're going to see it? And how can we develop the design that relates to those views? Next slide. Another thing that really struck us about the site is that Mamaronek has these wonderful, very vital kind of Main Street spaces on the post road and going up Mamaronek Avenue where the buildings all kind of line up in a kind of continuous street wall. And those kind of wrap up Prospect Avenue a little bit. But then it transitions from kind of Village Main Street to more like Village Green. And so we see the site as a point in that transition. And that makes it very interesting for us to think about how we respond to those two different contexts. And so you can see in this image, the, the two color tones represent these more kind of civic cultural buildings in, in one tone and the more kind of commercial village, Main Street buildings. And, and in, in developing the shape of our building, we wanted to respond to both of those, both of those neighborhood conditions. Next slide. And so one thing that was really important to us was to think about, you know, there is this wonderful, the informal village green, you know, right around this building here with the poetry garden. It really has, you know, it's, it's a wonderful place. And so I've been thinking about how we would build a building across the street. One of the things we wanted to do was to extend the green across the street. Really make it something that as you're walking along Prospect, you kind of feel like, like you're in the center of that. Next slide. And, and that's, that's a spatial experience, but it also has to do with the kinds of buildings that, that are around that are relating to all the cultural and civic buildings from the American Legion Building to this building right here, Emerald Theater, the library, and really seeing how we can cite our building in the midst of that network of common spaces. And that's where thinking about a space like the community hub that Richard was just talking about. You know, that's a place where the new housing building provides something for the residents. But it also provides a place to, to kind of really anchor the building into that network. And the public parking as well. The public parking is going to be how people are kind of coming and going from a lot of those community and civic uses. And so, so we really think of that as one of the ways that our building is anchored into that network. Next slide. And here you can see, you know, sort of fine moves that we've been thinking about how you go from, you know, the zoning that is at the right for the site, which would be to basically kind of build up, you know, five stories. And, and that's the kind of initial envelope that you start with. But in thinking about how we make it relate better to the village, we, we go through a series of steps. So the first one is, you know, pushing back one side of the building to allow us to extend the green across the street and recreate a, a very generous kind of green front yard for the new building. And then creating articulation, so not, you know, opportunities for the facade of the building to step in or step out, really have the scale and the texture of the Mamaronek's architecture. And then opportunities for setbacks, taking parts of the roof of the building and dropping them down a little bit to reduce the scale. And then finally, you know, taking advantage of, of these pitchable roofs to further kind of bring down the scale, reintegrate the building into the neighborhood. And, and, and then open up for that, the community hub, lift up the street wall and create this very public access on the part of the building that beats the sidewalk. So all of that comes together in the image that you're going to see on our next slide. One more in this here. But then, then the other thing that we wanted to have time to do is, you know, the kind of wonderful kind of material tradition of architecture in the village with the beautiful stonework that exists in many places, which is quite wonderful in the library. And, and so, you know, in, in thinking about how we want to build here, we want to draw from the local materials. And so the, the concept for the new housing building is to, it has a stone base that draws pretty directly from the stone walls of the library and of other buildings in Mamaronek. And then the upper part of the building is, picks up two tones from all the kind of multiple tones that exist in that stonework. And they become sort of two complementary volumes sort of embrace above that stone base. Next slide. So here you see sort of from you from the Veterans Memorial, how all that comes together. The stone base, that's out of the slightly smoother cement panel, upper portion of the building. And also the green extending across the street, which is really very important. Next slide. So getting a little bit more into that, the ground floor of the building, which is really, that, that's the part of the building that the public is going to interact with as they're coming and going from the parking or as they're going to the community hub. That's where we really found this opportunity to create a little kind of pocket of public seating in the green space along the park. And then slope the site up from there to create then a, a, a more of a kind of residential lawn in, in front of the entry of the residential building. The community hub is the portion of the building that comes out closer to the sidewalk. And, and because it has that public program and, and all along the, you know, the sidewalk is pretty narrow, so we probably can't fit trees in the sidewalk. But we've left room in more of the sidewalk for, to be able to plant some significant trees to really, you know, kind of create that extension of green across the street. The other things that you're seeing here, so you're seeing on the left-hand side of the image, the entrance to the public parking paved in, in a kind of plaza-like way, unit pavers. So it really reads as a kind of continuous part of the, of the kind of civic space of the green. And then the, the resident parking on the right-hand side of the street. And then the, in the middle is the, the entry lobby and then a kind of resident lounge, which you'll see is a double-height space, really gives the, the building a, 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 a very nice and kind of gracious opening to that, that green space. Next slide. And, you know, we are a architect for a landscape practice and probably not going to be absolutely true ideas of our landscape architects, because I'm just an architect. But, you know, a couple of the things that they talked about as we're developing this design was the idea of, of using indigenous plantings in the design, but also thinking about seasonal color. You know, it's actually striking, kind of just coming here tonight, seeing some of the fall colors. We want those colors to be there in the landscape of that green space all year round. And by picking the right plants, we can do that. And also thinking about some of those taller trees in front of the building that allow you to still have good visibility, so it feels very safe. And you also get good shade. It is open to the south and west, the, the facade of the building. So it's really, it'll be a good space, sort of pre-seasoned, open space. But in summer, you'll definitely want the trees for that shade. And then, you know, kind of trees ringing all around your side. And, and then you also see a, a portion there on the corner of the building, which is a green space that's elevated at this roof level that you're seeing a little bit more of later. Next slide. And, and did you see how that, that front area works where you've got at sidewalk level the kind of more public seating portion? And then a little bit elevated is the, the residential entrance. But because the, the sidewalk slopes across the site, we can bring in a path that creates a very easy ADA access going across the site. So it's not actually even a ramp to get you from the sidewalk to that residential entrance. Next slide. And so here you, you get an idea, sort of, this is kind of overlooking from the public parking entrance. And you see a little bit of that green space, the kind of more public seating portion of it up along the sidewalk. The accessible slope that cuts across the middle of it, going through the residential entrance. And then in the background, the more glassy kind of community hub space. You know, really a space where whatever programs are happening there are very visible to neighbors. And, and I guess the other thing I'll point out in this image is the opportunity to create that double-height entry parlor. You know, really giving the, the residents of this building everything, this front door, just like all the other houses in there. Next slide. So the, the sustainability of this is very important. We are targeting massive design, which is one of the kind of highest standards to which you can, you can design a building in terms of performance. That means having a very tight envelope that doesn't let air in or out. It means recovering energy from the, the ventilation air that you are circulating through the apartments. And also participating in the enterprise three communities, which is also another kind of sustainability standard for affordable housing. And so we combined both of those. And on the next slide, we have a diagram that's a little hard to see on the screen, but it goes through a lot of those elements of sustainability. You know, resilience is very important. The building has, has solar panels that are, you know, both on the sloping roofs and on the flat roofs. It has a generator, a backup generator, so it can be a kind of resiliency center. And that community hub has backup power in, in case of, of power losses, which we've all experienced in the past years and, and having those spaces where neighbors can go in the case of a power outage is, is very important. And, you know, we're, we have as much as possible kind of green surfaces that can infiltrate water slowly without kind of overburdening of the groundwater systems, also water retention of that as well. You know, the building is designed to be, it's a wood frame structure, which allows us to get very, you know, is economical, gets us a very high level of energy performance. And, and that goes into that passive design. So it'll be a low-carbon footprint to build the building and also low-carbon footprint in its operations. And next slide. And so, you know, here you kind of have a overview of the building. We have been very excited to be able to, to work on this and feel like we have arrived at an initial sketch that we think is very, kind of fits well in the village. But we kind of would look forward to the process of working with you and working with West Hab, Washingtonville to refine that. Obviously, you know more about the village, so maybe you, and so we would, we would wonder from that. With that, kind of that's you.
Yeah, sounds great. I've been, you know, we've been working with Marvel throughout the whole process. And it still just blows me away, the thoughtful detail that goes into everything for this thing and the sustainability and there's the contextual concept anyway. I won't go on and so forth. Now we're going to talk about who effectively would live in this building, really some of the programming, the building interiors. Some, you know, put a little meat on the bones here. So to go to the next slide, a lot of this is a little hard to read on the slide. I get that. Obviously, our presentation's also a bit of a mine. But I just want to try to hit it to highlights. I think when people talk about affordable housing, we're not always sure we're talking about the same thing. Affordable housing is based on a percentage of area median income. In this case, Westchester's area median income. I think it's really important for everyone to recognize the area median income in Westchester right now for a family of four is $146,800. So that is the AMI for a family of four. So when we're talking about 60% of that or 80% of that or 30% of that, you're talking about 30 or 60 or 80% of about $150,000. For a family size of one, just to give you the different ranges here. For the first time, the AMI in Westchester in the last couple of years for a family of one has exceeded $100,000. It's now $102,800. So we live in a very affluent county in total. We know it's averaged into the total. We have expansive area north of 287 and, you know, you know, throughout our county driving these numbers. But it's important to recognize that the area median income of 140 That the area median income of a hundred and forty six K or a hundred and two uh thousand dollars per family of one. Does not meet all the needs for our workforce, does not meet. The waiters and busboys when we go out to eat in our downtowns. Nor does it meet the folks that work in not-for-profits and municipalities and libraries and. Uh, you know, uh, all kinds of local usages, right? Um, so when we talk about affordable housing in such a high cost environment like Westchester, it's inherently workforce house. Building to sixty percent at on an average, which is what our financing requires, which is essentially what. The financing for all all affordable housing requires. You have the income average to sixty percent of AMI. And again, we're talking about income averaging to sixty percent of a very high number. So the expectation here is you're building a building that really works for a range of people. That may be earning thirty, forty thousand dollars, that may also be earning fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. Who would all be eligible for different units in this building. So you see our range of units, it's a nice distribution. Uh, of studios, of ones, of twos, of threes, primarily one and two. This is all done with local marketing studies to understand what the need is, so you have. A huge diversity of people looking for affordable housing. You have seniors downsizing, you have young people starting out, you have young couples and you have families. Uh, you know, you have a whole range of of needs to meet. Um, so you see eleven studios, twenty six ones, thirty two twos, eight threes. It's like a a distribution that really represents the need in our community. And then you also can see across the bottom that distribution in terms of AMI percentage. So to have some units that stretch as low as thirty percent, which really needs an abundant need in our community. It's really not that low, it's people that might be earning forty five thousand dollars a year depending on family size. Uh, so we have sixteen units at thirty percent, six at forty, six at fifty, thirty two at sixty. And then even uh can't read my slide too well, sixteen at eighty percent. So it's a really beautiful blend of incomes and this is really what we try to create. Um, is a really balanced building. That meets the various needs in our community in terms of both AMI percentages and also a a unit uh mix uh as well. Uh, I know uh just anecdotally, I know a little bit from Monday next meeting, there was some discussion about. The kind of lottery that's conducted when affordable housing is built. All affordable housing that's built has to adhere to fair housing law. Fair housing law prescribes the way in which a lottery is is conducted to make sure that all people have the opportunity. To to attain this kind of really high quality housing. What I'll also say though is because of our presence on the ground at Washingtonville Housing Alliance, because of our partnership with CRC. Our ability to market so heavily locally means that all of our properties end up being unbelievably local. I showed in the earlier slide, seven twenty six Old White Plains Road with ten units. Nine out of ten of those tenants are originally marked community. And we all move sometimes, right? So we can forgive one person. Amerenex in our towers is the same way. Um, it adheres to all of the fair housing standards, but we make sure everyone in our village knows of the housing opportunity. I said before, people pour into the village itself, into. Uh, Washingtonville Housing Alliance, into CRC every day asking, where can I find housing, et cetera? They're the ones that get the first flyer. They're the ones that we make sure uh are aware of this opportunity and it's our goal to meet the local needs, make sure the local business owners. Uh, know about this opportunity for their employees, for their customers, et cetera. So you can do a lot by really marketing uh buildings. Um, because our goal here is to be a part of this village and meet the needs of the village. So I just want to dispel, you know, with this a little bit. What are these AMIs all about? You know, you know. Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. And 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 what are the needs that we're really trying to meet? And, you know, I I said earlier, you know, these are our friends and neighbors. They really are. These are our friends and neighbors. These are people that we interact with. I'm Amerenek Avenue every day. These are our municipal workers. These are our not-for-profit workers. So there's really a lot of thought, uh, not just in the design of the building. But in how you tend in a building and how you make sure it meets the needs that this village is trying to accomplish through this RFP. So I really want to to really highlight that. I'm going to turn this over now to Andrew Drumansky. Who's going to bring us a little bit into the interior of the building, get the parking a little bit, and we'll wrap up shortly to to get this in queue now.
Moving to the next slide, please.
Below. These two are incredibly elegant. Um. Anyway, I wanted to uh take you through kind of a sample of some of our units. Um, and this is our, this is a cubed unit that we actually designed for. Uh, the Hundred Terrace Building, as you can see, it's eight hundred and sixty square feet. Um, these are efficient, uh, but spacious units. They have quality and durable materials. We're putting in stainless steel appliances. Each unit will have a dishwasher. Um, there are stone countertop and ceramic tile in every unit, so we're really trying to make these feel luxurious for types of spaces that they are. Um, each one has generous closet space. Um, and I think the thing that's important to know is whether you're earning thirty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars a year. Like, every person in the building gets the same view. Uh, there's no difference between any of them. And uh, we think that they're incredibly like high quality and and durable, long-lasting.
We hear the next one.
Um, this is the community hub we've been talking about. Um, it's about twenty five hundred square feet. Um, we actually did go out uh to our partners in the village to try to understand. Uh, and that's in the part on the space that we felt would be uh. We've got we've got we've got a mountain square footage. Um, we have a couple of offices in here for our staff and CRC staff. Uh, but mostly we ended up with a large, big classroom. Uh, based on input and the feedback that we got back. Uh, we can use this space for uh, you know, classes like English as a second language, financial literacy, entrepreneurship classes. Uh, we can use it for PTA meetings, we can use it for uh merchants associations and chamber of commerce meetings. Um, and we can use it for recreation and wellness uh events as well. Um, really, the idea is it's a very big multipurpose space. Um, the other thing we tried to accomplish with this space was creating an area of refuge in the event of a of a huge uh flood event. Um, this space will be one hundred percent on backup power, everything from heating and cooling. Uh, all the electrical outlets. And we can use it as a space to collect donations uh for people to go and just wait out the flood. Um, and and really just like that's what the that's what the community and the people that we spoke with felt like was was most needed uh through this space. I think with visual was quite cool, but it's a section through kind of the middle of the building, what you can see is the residential lobby. Um, that we are talked about as being uh double height. Uh, that adds a sense of luxurious to the to the actions of the building right off the green space. Uh, and you can see the residential floors above even to the to the solar canopy. Um, but we're using this to kind of show our residential and public parking. So all of our residential parking, um semi-spaces is below grade. Uh, and we showed the entrance coming right off the right side of the building. Um, we have fifty two pu- public parking spaces. Um, the idea here in some way was to hide the parking uh from the main road. Uh, something that that currently uh is is not happening. Um. And again, uh, we put this in our in our application, but. We would do uh EV charging stations at fifteen percent of the public parking spaces uh at a minute. Uh, we felt like that was important here in the village. We expect a lot of people to have electric vehicles and we want to encourage that. Um. Go to the next page. Uh, you can actually see both levels of parking below as well as the residential uh for the residential floor. Uh, as the um. Again, we. The the village will actually be able to earn revenue uh from the use of these parking spaces. They'll be metered and. Um, and without that, it could actually have to move up, maintain and ensure the parking aren't like it does now. So again, we feel that there's flexibility. Um, if we have unused parking spaces, we can only come back to the village, so residents aren't using all the spaces that are. Uh, that are provided for them. We're having fifty bucks in the village and I I think this is maybe. We understand that community parking is important. And we can discuss with the village flexibility in terms of. If if this isn't enough community parking, we're happy to work on something that might work better for the village after this. This is just a start. Uh, can you go to the next slide?
Andrew, Andrew, can you hold hold the microphone closer because it's broken up a little bit? Yeah, it's a little bit better. Yeah, you just have to talk right into it. It's one of those directional mic.
Um, yeah, can you go to the next slide, please? Uh, this is actually my favorite uh visual that we created. Uh, you get a lot of, when you look at the renderings, you see a lot of viewpoints of the building itself. Uh, but I think this gives you a view of what tenants that are uh utilizing the indoor-outdoor rooftop space can actually see. Um, we put this space on uh the right side of the building so that people could see the the village downtown, the harbor. We just think it's going to have such incredible views. And uh, and this is a kind of like a snapshot of what that might look like. Um, this is in addition to other resident amenity spaces, uh a ground for uh resident space. Uh, there'll also be onsite laundry on every floor for the benefit of the tenants. Uh, there'll be free wifi access throughout the building and as we mentioned, there will be community and resident parking. Um, we will also have bike parking on site. But we really wanted to showcase this. We think it's an incredible amenity. We think maybe we'll we'll have some of our Dallas there. Uh, and uh, we we can really make good use out of a space with such.
Uh, we're actually doing okay on time. I was nervous we'd all talk too much. I have a couple of slides here to wrap up the new mode. Well, gladly entertain Q and A. Uh, quick, it's scary, some scary points and I won't belabor things that we covered well, but. You know, there's extensive benefits to the village um in issuing this RFP and this opportunity to seize this moment of uh. You know, creating an exciting development. Obviously, the seventy seven really high quality. Uh, energy efficient uh apartments, this multi-purpose hub that we uh talked about so much and we're really excited about that partnership between Washington Bill. Uh, and CRC and something really beautiful can happen there programmatically. Uh, the parking spaces, obviously, um, having to replace public spaces that are there as now. And have residential spaces and as Andrew said, um, trying our best to provide some stability between the two. In all affordable developments, especially folks that work locally that we hope to target, maybe they don't own a car. If we have less residential need for parking. Uh, we'd be delighted to have the most public parking possible uh to help meet that need. So there's some flexibility there. Um, designing this to pass it out standards and we don't have from this earlier, this is going to be a state-of-the-art building uh from a green perspective. Um, that we're really proud of, that I think the whole village can be proud of. Um, we kept going through all of the landscaping and we didn't use the word terrace enough, because that would make Hundred Terrace make more sense. But all of that terracing uh on the front. Uh, our our rooftop amenity, all of the different ways that green is brought in and the different. Um, you know, different levels and you're, you know, different uh areas for people to congregate were brought in. Uh, to go to the next slide, obviously, financial benefits for the village. Um, we anticipate acquiring the site from the village for five million dollars. That's what's in our proposal. And then the village has to pay for the public parking, affordable housing financing can't pay for that. So our estimate was that the village would net three point five million dollars uh when all is said and done. That's in addition to obviously benefiting from from the financing of the public parking. Uh, and then also obviously property taxes and. Just to be upfront, just because we are not-for-profit has nothing to do with property taxes. We pay property taxes. Um, and uh, it's been proven over and over again that affordable housing development pay more into municipalities. Than the costs uh that are incurred from educating students that live there, et cetera. Um, so there should be a financial benefit to the village for stepping up and putting out an RFP and and having vision for your community. Uh, and then the last slide, um. I've said this earlier, uh, I believe I'm finding meeting the moment. Um, there's a real, there's a real great opportunity here for the village to need by example. We have a housing crisis in our community. Well, here in Amerenek, you can zoom out in Westchester, you can zoom out to the state of New York. Um, housing costs are out of control. Uh, job growth in the state of New York has far outpaced exponentially. Uh, housing development, we are losing people to lower pack states, we are losing people to all kinds of places. Uh, and this is an opportunity for the village to take something and say, oh, uh, obviously put out an RFP which which you've which you've done. And and try to step up and show the way a suburban village can meet this need. Um, the the village has always been a very diverse uh inclusive place. This is another step in that. And then really set a standard for, and we said it in various ways, there's not. One kind of unit for eighty percent AMIs and a different kind of unit for thirty percent AMIs. This is about producing beautiful housing for everyone that lives here. Uh, and really, really, you know, re-establishing a standard of what resilient affordable housing could be. Uh, and create something in the village that everyone can be proud of. And, you know, this is for our tenants. But this is also for everyone downtown that parks here. This is for the folks that uh come to the village green, that come in the community hub. Um, really something that meets this moment more so than just residential, but in terms of uh building community. If you just go to the last slide, um, in every way, I'll just say, we're really proud to put this forward. Um, we know this is the beginning of the process, not in, you know, the end of a process, but to engage in dialogue with the village, with the public. And make sure what comes out the other end is the best investment for this village possible. Uh, and we hope that the starting point for Hundred Terrace uh, you know, uh, is an exciting one for you all as much as it is for us. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you very much. Um, who who was to start?
Well, I.
Do you want to down?
I think it's just any order, it doesn't matter. Okay, well, well, fir- first thing, um. You got this space in the back for the parking. Uh, uh, couldn't we put another level of parking back there? Uh, and 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 really, really, really punch up the amount of parking that's available. I mean, uh, it 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 doesn't seem like it would be a a a heavy lift.
Yeah, I mean, we could potentially, uh, we are coming up against the building height, so we would lose. One floor of units if we build another floor of parking. Um, but I mean, this is something we're happy to discuss if that's.
Well, I I mean, on on that back lot, that back lot there, I mean, it seems like if you. At another level on that back lot, you'd have, you know, pretty much a a a. A um.
But then it'll be somebody else.
Okay, what if what if you put the, but yeah, I mean, the the there's, I don't want to design.
We are happy to discuss adding more parking. We understand this is a big priority for the village. We're happy to discuss ways to figure out.
Because our 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 mental model of this is like, we 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 have a parking uh facility. It's dreadful as it looks. It it serves a a real purpose. So um, uh, we we. Mental model was. We get that fixed. We we got all the parking and then uh the 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 building goes kind of above it, you know?
We we did look at the ability to uh re-utilize the parking lot. We sent a structural engineer actually out there to look at it. And between the amount of money you would actually have to spend to fix it and then the way that it lines up structurally. Really wouldn't work with a residential building. So we. Just determined that we needed to demolish it and build something new, but we're happy to talk about how we create more parking if that's what the village.
Well, I'm not, I I'm just interested in the number of spaces, not in love with that structure by any by any stretch.
Um, yeah. Hmm, when it comes down to parking again, I'm I'm looking at the, if I'm looking at structure on the page. The left hand side where uh which is at the back is where um some of the fire uh uh the firefighters park and things like that. I'm not conceptually wise and design wise, I can't visualize it, so I want to make sure that they have. Space and I don't know how people are coming and going and I I I'm just visually, I can't see it.
Yeah, uh, it took us a little while to understand exactly how the elevations were going to work. But you can connect from that influence to that area of the building, back to the fire engines, it works elevation wise and it was set up to do so. So the area where the fire department is currently parking in the back and the area in front where the. The building entrances will be on the same level uh on the parking, the public park.
Okay. It is, and it's. And it's pretty much a straight shot like where we're proposing to come into the public parking. You're basically just kind of driving straight through underneath the building. Through the public parking lot and then that lands you at the fire station. And we have enough height to clear the fire department's antennas, which are currently getting broken.
On the current structure.
On the current structure.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, but at a lower level.
Structure. And then I don't know if this is like a a um. A kind of uh the the printing. Thing on the um, on the last page, but if there's a line in between under, is, are you having partitions? Is that a? I don't, is it, am I anyone seen this?
No, I switch it on. She's talking about the the kind of. Or is that just a design element?
So on the last, on the last stage, there's like these lines that look like barricades, like when we are at a parking um facility.
Those are access control, it's a troll of parking lot.
So let me just.
Yeah, there there is. Yeah.
So when we said that the the village can earn, you know, right now there's permanent parking and metered parking infrastructure. This would be our way of. Sorry, this would be our way of uh of letting, of like controlling access to the public parking area. And putting a meter there so that we could actually generate revenue.
So my only concern is when the fire department has to immediately come out and if that is faulty at any point in time. I just wanna make sure.
The only thing I I don't think that the, I I could be wrong and I'm not, I don't know how fire departments work well enough, but most of the actual large scale fire trucks come out on.
Yes, but I even, but even in the, if there's people in the back that you have their their emergency vehicles. And they sometimes park there. So if they did have to leave, those are not the ones who are riding in the part and the fire truck. Those are the ones who are who are driving their cars.
For them as the chief's truck or any of them.
So.
We can figure this out.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure there's no hindrance to them and what they have to do.
We we don't wanna mess with the fire.
Where, we can figure it out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh may I make a comment on the parking?
Okay, Greg.
Greg, yes, 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 please.
Okay, thank you. Um so, uh. The Hunter lot has historically been. Underutilized. Um the village had commissioned a study. Uh back, I think it was two thousand fourteen or fifteen by Walker Parking Consultants. Um and according to that study, it was utilized during the peak hours that it was a a rate, they had a range of sixty four to eighty one. Cause they just split up the heat map based on those numbers. So sixty sixty to eighty percent utilization rate during the peak hours. Um weekn- weekend nights, like uh Friday and Saturday night. Um so I think it might be worthwhile to take another look at utilization of the parking lot during peak times. Uh one. And and two, I think that there may be opportunities for. Kind of sharing the parking between the residents and and the village, uh the public. Um what they're proposing. We should see what what the actual utilization rate is and and then see how much public parking really needs to be there based on. The utilization that we see during peak demand times. Um and it might be, it might show us a number that's similar to what they're proposing. I I don't know. And the the data has to kind of lead us to that conclusion. Um but if it does, then the village could consider ways to have perhaps. The same number of meters parking spaces as now. Um and have shared just G P parking for. Both the residents and anybody else who has a G P parking space, but that would require legislation. That um would essentially allow the planning board. Uh to. Have G P parking spaces or municipal parking spaces on the same lot lot count towards. The parking requirement for zoning purposes. Something to consider, just an idea. Um but I think it it it. I think it's best to let the data kind of show both the utilization and and how to implement parking.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, no, it's Dan.
Greg, Greg, my 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 only concern with that, Greg, is that is that we we wanna use, if if it's underutilized now. Hopefully, this is a more attractive place to park, uh that it would be better used uh in in the future. Uh so um. I don't wanna be uh be tied to whatever numbers are there. Now, I know. My personal thing, if I can park somewhere else, I park somewhere else, but I just don't like parking there, you know, so um uh. I think more parking spaces than we have now wouldn't be a bad thing because it would, because we're we're short of parking. I mean, uh.
Yeah, I should also mention that that same study, uh it looked at the uses in the downtown and it basically said. That if more uses are converted from kind of more retail, brick and mortar retail. Uh and personal service to restaurants, then that will increase the parking demand. Um that hasn't. Really occurred. Uh to date, you know, it's been almost a decade since that study was uh issued. Um. But you know, I think it still makes sense to look at at the utilization rates. I think, you know, parking demand is gonna relate to. Uh you know, really mostly to the retail. Um who's coming at what times for what types of uses, whether it's restaurants, which increases the demand at night. Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. Um if that's balanced by personal service during the day, you know, people going to get haircuts, things like that. So just something to think about.
Bo- bottom line, more parking. I guess that's 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 what we're talking about. Parking, parking, parking. Um uh and um.
More questions on parking.
Yeah, Nora, you got it?
I I I did not have a question on parking. I'm I'm going back to um. The the lottery and who qualifies? So how do you, I mean, how, who who are the likely? People who would be able to enter into the lottery? Is it simply based on income or?
Yes, it is based on income. You are required to do a fair and affirmative marketing process.
I I know that.
Uh you know, just so everyone.
I just wanna, yeah, just to get a simple what it is.
That provides to some degree how you have to market uh uh the availability. You have to publicize in certain ways when the lottery will be drawn, when you can apply until. What I said was what our local effort will be to ensure that each and every person in this village is aware of this opportunity.
And.
But then you are literally picking numbers out of a hat.
At at the various levels, because you 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 can set up what these levels are.
Correct. And then when you tenant the building, you're going one at a time and calling these applicants and saying, do you still qualify or are you still interested? Do you still qualify or are you still interested? How do you check the AMI?
And how fu- is it, is it a Westchester County based marketing or do you need to go into the Bronx South Party? Was how how is, how wide is your marketing plan have to spread?
Yeah, so anyone can apply, but I don't think that we have to market uh how wrong is the marketing? All right, he knows the answer.
Marketing would be, we last chapter, that would include some areas. Public of Bronx and Kansas County. Um the main component though of uh fair marketing is that you're trying to target the least likely to apply. So we actually would have to do a study on who the least likely will buy it, then we would put it out there. Um and and see.
And you do, you, West, the West have does that, you do it yourselves or do you rely on, not not the study, but do you rely, you do your own marketing?
When you work, when you, when you, when you work with the Westchester County Home Land Program, which is kind of what we're proposing here. Uh they have their own uh marketing consultant, which is Westchester Residences.
Right.
Who's W R O.
That's who we're using now for our individual units.
For uh for.
And then ev- and then every two years, people have to income. Verify.
So they get, so they do an income verification their first year when you move into the building. Every year after that, we do an income qualification, but you're allowed to, your income is allowed to increase. And nothing can, so the first year you qualify for a thirty percent unit and the next year you qualify for a sixty percent unit. That's a good thing. It means you make more income. If you're lower rent, you can spend more money if you don't.
Okay.
I mean, uh a lot of times people don't realize that they can apply. I mean, uh a a young person making sixty, seventy grand. Might not think they were, they're they're entitled. So that requires some some convincing them to to do this. I mean, I got a call from some friend of mine. Well, asking me, well, how do how do I get one of these apartments? You know, I said, well, it's a little early, so. But um.
And then within that, it's just, you know, you see who verify and then then it's then it's the lottery.
Sort of, yeah, but but people like. Like, not everybody wants to move. They apply, but they don't necessarily wanna move. So a lot of people who end up being local because it's close to them and they. Community there and they're part of the neighborhood already and this is where they wanna live.
And then somebody might get it and say, do I really wanna live that far from my work if I don't live in?
And ultimately, this, the the problem's only gonna be solved if enough communities step up and build these kinds of complexes so that. There are more units in the whole area available.
And and on the point about uh folks not usually wanting to move that, you know, I I worked on a a pilot study for small area fair market rents. Uh, oh man, it was about a decade ago. And they were looking at setting prices for hu- for housing vouchers at different rates based on zip code. Um so you could, the HUD would pay a higher rate if you were in a high income zip code and a lower rate in a lower income zip code. And what the study found within this area, uh the Town of Amerenick Housing Authority actually, was that a lot of people wouldn't. Leave to go to the higher um income zip codes because they had connections with where they already were. You know, they had a neighbor that would take care of their kid or. Um you know, they had family nearby, that kind of thing. So there's empirical evidence out there about that.
All right, I I I've got a question now about this um. The ownership of the property, because we own that property and I'm not uh inclined to let that ownership go. So uh I don't know how every everybody else feels about it. So so this um uh this 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 payment upfront. Botheres me a little bit. Um I I would rather see a a a structure where we uh get paid. Every year. Forever. Uh um and create a revenue stream. Uh so 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 that 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 that's something that that appeals to to this trustee.
So so let me just give a brief overview.
Yeah.
The way that it's structured and why.
Yeah.
Um. There is, to be able to use the new homes land acquisition fund through Westchester County, which is an incredible gap for for affordable housing projects. Um they need to take ownership for like a minute. Uh it's part of the title sequence.
Okay.
Uh and then it can be conveyed right back to the village.
Okay.
And then we can do whatever kind of like structure makes the most sense for the project.
Like a ninety nine year lease or something like that?
Ninety nine year lease is no problem. The reason we structure it with a with an acquisition cost upfront honestly is because. When you do a ground lease and it has a a high or any sort of uh expense to it. It actually lowers the amount of debt that we can take on and that debt is needed to build the building in the first place. So the way the new homes land program works is we can establish an acquisition cost upfront. We can give the village. Uh a a certain amount of money, um but if we don't do it like that, it actually makes financing the project much harder. Otherwise, uh and it's the great part about the the county program. It's also a challenge if that's not necessarily the goal.
Yeah.
Um but I will say, if you're making three and a half million dollars and you put it into a uh a fund that's earning the interest, you're gonna make a lot of money year after year in terms of.
Well, I know I won't be, none of us will be here for it, but I don't want somebody in a hundred years saying those boneheads sold that piece of property for five hundred bucks.
Yeah, you've been ninety nine year ground lease with an automatic recurring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is you're gonna own this land first. The village is never gonna give us land.
Okay, got it. That's that's my, that's my major concern.
And that also provides some cash for the village to contribute to constructing our own parking spaces because. One of the reasons that this is appealing is that the village doesn't need to commit to building two hundred parking spaces at thirty thousand dollars a parking space. So there's. Well, that, yeah, that's that's why, I think that's why it looks the way it has. So and and our, so I is is ninety nine years like the perpet- perpetuity? Like the these units don't sunset, because we've built several units in this community that are no longer affordable.
Yeah, it it's, it's a, it's a ninety nine year ground lease, our rent restrictions would come uh through a regulatory agreement. They could also come through the ground lease. It's really up to the way it gets negotiated. Ninety nine years leases establish. Like long term site control for whoever, like for our partnership essentially. Um that allows us to to build building and take the tax credits necessary to actually.
And does the, does the county require any term of this? Cause I think that their term is longer than it was when we built the regatta, for instance.
So the the state requires a thirty year regulatory uh restriction. The county has a fifty year regulatory restriction. Those will get mixed in in some way, but there is so much long term balloon debt on this property. Uh based on our financing sources, this this property will never come out of of its affordability. The goal, yeah, and the goal is when you enter into our financing structure, the dudes are gonna be affordable. Or or for.
You mentioned uh about storm water management and you said that you have um some kind of water detention uh suggestions. I, can you give me an example of what you are planning to do in terms of water detention? You said there was like. I mean, there's a lot of ideas, but.
Yeah, so um uh one thing that we typically do is we design in rooftop detention. Uh so on the flat roof areas, we can hold water on the roofs. And and release that into the storm sewers uh at a at a slower pace. Um so that it doesn't uh overwhelm storm sewers in a in a storm event. Um if we know where we can. At grade, we would have uh pervious pavings. We do have a kind of a green roof on the terrace. That also helps to slow down the water. Um where we're not building on top of the parking, which there is some area that we're not. Uh at the perimeter of the site uh and and up against the sidewalk, there we can infiltrate. Water directly back into the water tank is is the ideal thing to do. And then the last thing that, you know, whatever we cannot address that way, we would address with a detention tank. Uh built into the foundation.
Right, right now it's a giant concrete slab that everything runs into the harbor. Uh so I I think you're you're guaranteeing us that this is substantially better.
Yes.
Yeah, but we still need to know.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Um if if I may go back just quickly to the period of affordability, the village code requires that if it's rent or occupy, that it must remain. Affordable as long as any portion of the site is used for residential purposes. So it perpetuity.
Thank you. Um I have another question. Okay, um. When it comes down to like the fourth floor and housing, uh assuming that these are, there are elevators in these, in these, in this building. Um is there any preference for seniors and handicap?
Uh certain percentage of the units uh will be ADA accessible. Uh they won't necessarily go on the first floors. You don't have positive events on the first floor.
Um.
But uh you know, the elevator will also be on backup power, so we might do a community accessible app through operatives will be able to get there. Uh even in the events of. Um in terms of preferences for seniors and preferences for uh tenants with. In their accessibility, um the seniors were not able to do a um a community preference for seniors. Uh that's not where our tax codes finance and structures uh what they allow for. Um and I'm actually not sure in terms of the accessibility. I think the way it works is used um. You market to uh organizations that have lists of uh people who need accessible housing. And then they can apply on the lottery. I actually don't think there's like a specific preference. For uh for tenants in the accessibility housing, accessible housing. Uh it's something I probably need to.
If you can, please, because I I mean, I know definitely seniors are on a fixed income and. Possibly individuals who have disabilities aren't fixing incomes. So those are things that we wanna take in consideration, especially when it comes down to affordability.
As far as disability, I mean, there are some corollars out there. You have the uh, is it Dree program? Disabled Resident Income Ex- uh Exemption Program.
Hmm.
Uh the village uh enacted that, I think maybe about two years ago. Uh and we established a income limit, I think of fifty thousand dollars. So anyone, anyone who earns under fifty thousand dollars qualifies for that. Um I don't believe we have any disabled individuals in the village who are taking advantage of that program right now. And I recall when I spoke with uh the New York State Office of Home and Community Renewal, even on a countywide basis. The number is is pretty low. Uh I I it it's either people aren't aware of it or.
Lack of awareness is a thing.
Can can I, uh Luke, can I ask a question of, um is it Guido?
Yes.
So um what's the timeframe for the demo and construction in your mind? Um for a building this size and a a development this size?
I think maybe Andrew will take that.
Oh, I had no idea Andrew could answer that question.
Well, if you're talking about how long it will take to after a demo of a garage, we think it'll probably take a half or two. It won't take very long to demo it. The bigger question is when? Um we think it usually takes about uh six months to a year to finance a project. After we get through the entitlements process. So I made this clear in the submission, but the faster we can get through the entitlements process and. Approval and do seeker, uh the faster we can get a shovel over there.
So what what exactly is that, then that total time plan of beginning that process and getting to the end of having a.
So if we were designated, the next thing would be to establish uh and negotiate a purchase and sale agreement or some sort of ground lease agreement. To uh establish that we have site control and can take it through the entitlements process. Um this building is a hundred percent as of rights, so we wouldn't have to go to the zoning board, uh but we would have to go through the planning board. To do uh seeker and they'd have to take lead agency and do seeker and go through the site plan approval. I imagine the Harbor Coastal Zone would also need to review it. Um so all of that would be done at the same time. I mean, it could be as fast as three months if everybody's on the same page. It can take a year if it's gonna take a year. Um once we have uh site plan approval, then we're kind of doing two things concurrently. We're working through all of our financing packages. And we're submitting to the buildings department for building permits and we expect that to take a while.
Got it. And then I. Well, I think two years then.
Yeah, two years depending on.
Before you start demolishing the garage.
Right, we wouldn't, we we wouldn't be able to demolish the garage until our. Right, we wouldn't, we we wouldn't be able to demolish the garage until our.
Oh, right. And so this everything, no, 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 no.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't be, everything would be done. Once our finances.
Yeah.
Players, anything that happens on site would happen at that point. Just to go very broad strokes there, land use and financing takes two years. Then you get to a groundbreaking. That's when you're demoing, then you're beginning. And construction takes two years. I know um, I think we said, I know I'm plus or minus, but like, everything goes as quickly and well as possible. Cutting a ribbon in four years. I mean, that's quickly, that's could happen.
Okay, so two so two year as far as after the approvals and all of that and other stuff gets done. Two year construction period, demo and construction period, because while we have a hundred and thirty spots uh off of Phillips Park Road. Um I think the board would probably want me to develop some kind of a contingency for the parking. Uh whether that's shuttling, uh because we have five hundred spaces at the harbor or some other some other creative method. So that's really what I was looking for, Andrew, where where we were, you know, what's that period of time when we lose that parking garage? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Um my, one of my questions is. Um I know you mentioned this kind of community kind of room and center, but in partnership with the Community Resource Center, I know that's something, I know us as a village. We really lack that kind of community space. Is that something you would partner with our rec department or just with the builder of America to be able to use offer programming? You know, people in our community.
Even the even the village board for an extra meeting, right?
Oh, I.
There are days when we don't have enough space, so yeah.
Won't be so elevated.
No, nobody's in love with this room. Nobody's in love with this room.
Answers yes.
And then I know another another piece in there is that is there's office space. Is there? Do you have planned to have personnel from um Washington Housing Alliance onsite to kind of manage the building or is that just office space? Because I know you have library lane. Is that just to get rid of that and move the people up here?
Yeah, so the answer is yes to both. So we showed a couple offices in that community hub that's envisioned as Washingtonville and CRC. It's not going to replace CRC's central office. It's not going to replace Washingtonville's central office. But when Theresa and her team or Drandi and her team are delivering programming, there's an office for both. That's all part of the community space. That's separate from our onsite property management office for the residential. So also built into the residential is our property management staff office and community space for the tenants. So you have like community space and office and then you also have the the public space and office.
And this isn't, this is not, I mean, I I know Washingtonville Housing Alliance has a mission and is helpful to many people. But this isn't really considered supportive housing.
Right. I just wanted to add one thing. We actually were investing in the community hub ourselves. We in the proposal, we're actually showing that we're paying for the build out.
And and I you answered my one of my questions that I had written here is that. Could it be a shelter area in emergencies? Because uh we have those here.
Yeah.
Uh Lou, I have one more question about the solar. What's the um uh what's the objective with the solar? Is it to offset the cost? Of the uh electricity used by the residents or is there some other um purpose to it? I don't know if you guys um I may have missed it in in the uh in the binder that I got.
The purpose of the solar with reading off that our only building is electric.
Okay, so you wouldn't be generating more energy than you use?
Based on because it's an all electric building, our total electrical consumption effectively is like much greater than it was the energy of the gas. Um we expect that a solar system around a hundred KW would cover uh twenty to thirty percent of the overall building.
Okay, okay.
I I know this is a random question, but and this would go towards Jerry. When when uh we have um emergency um. For the storm, when the uh uh Red Cross has to house the people who are um.
Displaced.
Displaced, thank you. Do we provide the cots? Does Red Cross provide cots?
The Red Cross has them uh here in the village, actually, right across the village line. We have a supply of them that we move, that we move for the Red Cross. Um but the issue with us with a um an evacuation shelter or a a a one week, five day, four day shelter. Is that if school is in session, the school doesn't doesn't allow us to use their their property. So in the past, IDA was before school started and then we had to move those people. And then this time around, it was on a weekday, on a weekend. So we had to think fast and quick on our feet and provide another shelter. So this would give us the ability to shelter individuals without having that stress.
Well, yes.
And the programming.
So I just want to know who provides the cots. Now, the walk-in closets in the community hub. Is there enough room for like um emergency response stuff to be housed?
I don't think in general the community hub is large enough to meet this kind of need. I think as we said, it would serve very well as a donation center. It would serve very well as someone who needs to come in and have some respite, get a meal. I don't think it becomes like a full time village. Shelter in an emergency shelter. I think obviously if an emergency came up, it's all hands on deck. It always, you know, this little steps up to meet the need.
But not even to. But not even to hold a few like ten cots is not enough?
If if we can, we will.
Okay.
I I'm also thinking in terms of.
They had a small storage area somewhere.
I'm just asking, because also to think those are the needs.
We have access to cots. We have access to cots for the very within within fifteen minutes. But but Leilani, the um the design for new village hall has an evacuation center for sixty people with showers and everything, so.
Try putting people in here um at at after the uh remnants of. Uh failure and you know, we have a a a limit in this room where we can accommodate. You know, physically and then just the amount of tables after we get no more than about, you know, fifty or sixty people in this room. Yeah.
I don't want to breathe in here.
And 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 the other the other thing, I mean, would probably what would be useful for before anything would be for an emergency cooling center. If we have an extended heatways. And and a power outage.
I think however that space was needed editing is in time, we're looking at it as a public. Give back amenity kind of thing and it'll be used in times of need.
Okay, got it.
How uh thank you. How I I'm just looking at some of the kind of amenities that you listed here. Uh uh how does the free wifi access work for residents? Is that something that's added to their bill or is it just something like a gift to? The residents, like how does that?
Built into new affordable housing financing these days. Everyone's recognized certainly due to pandemic. Wifi is a core need. We're building wifi into all future Westside Washingtonville developments.
All right, uh more questions? We good? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And listening.
Okay, so the next uh the next consultation.
Going to set for December, we probably should start thinking about those days.
Um I I think, yeah, you want to set that.
Public meeting, right?
Public meeting. You want to you want to do that now or you want to wait till?
I think we wait till after the twenty.
Wait till the twenty first of the calendar, right?
Well, I I think maybe we should do it. We don't, we could do it via email tomorrow. I think we should look for some dates. We can set, we can set meeting days via email. Bob Freeman says that.
Okay, motion to a motion to close the work session, please.
Some move.
I want a favor.